Good evening. My name is Matt Lawless and I'm the Scottsville Town Administrator. You are now viewing the Scottsville Town Council meeting for Monday, May 17th, 2021. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the town of Scottsville's ordinance on the continuity of local government during the COVID-19 disaster. The public officials who will be electronically present at this meeting are Mayor Ron Smith, Town Council members Lindsey Brown, Zach Bullock, Dan Gritsko, Laura Malusi, Stuart Munson, and Eddie Payne. Town staff members are also present for this meeting. The public has several opportunities to observe and participate at this meeting. These are listed at the entrance to the town office and on the town website. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on relevant matters, and this Town Council meeting agenda includes several public hearings with special comment opportunities both online and in person. Thank you for your participation in Scottsville Town Government. If you're viewing in the future on the town's YouTube channel, thank you very much. The posted start time for this meeting is 7:00 PM local time, and it is 14 minutes until 7:00 here now. So if you advance your meeting video ahead 14 minutes, you'll see the gathered start of the meeting. We're just waiting for our quorum to assemble and finish our setup here. So I'll mute this line and close the video for the next 14 minutes while we complete that. Thank you so much.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Doing well. How about yourself?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. Hi, Ron.
Turn my camera down, see if I can get this. I've got a cat sitting right here.
Oh.
Who is looking at all of your pictures. Very interesting.
Oh, my God. Very handsome. That's the second cat I've seen on the computer today. We're a dog household, so no cats here. Dogs and chickens, that's what we have.
Oh, that's wonderful. I've been pestering for some chickens.
Okay, they're more fun with children to help manage.
Sound check? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, um, I was talking to Clark over at the Forests, and he came up with a interesting idea for 4th of July, a laser light show rather than real fireworks.
Well, I spoke with Mr. Carr today, and it sounds like fireworks are a go based on that conversation today.
Okay, well, neighbor across the street doesn't like fireworks.
Oh.
That's why I suggested a laser show. The fireworks are damaging to the environment, and they scared his dog.
Yes, among other things.
Well, they've already got it on tap. There's not much we can do about it right now, but maybe in the future.
Well, and lasers are great for even non-independence days or celebrations and events, so would be wide open to having that conversation.
Yeah.
Good evening, Eddie.
Good evening, everybody, especially Laura.
Thank you.
Ron, I'm going to put this in the chat. This is a link from the Richmond Times-Dispatch story about the Christmas light show that they did with drones over at King's Dominion last year. Speaking of phosphorus-free firework alternatives, that's a tongue twister.
Yes.
I saw a laser light show out in Denver back when it was really a new thing, back in the 70s, and then down at in Georgia at the that, oh, God, I can't even remember the name of it now.
Sorry, I should tell the rest of you on Zoom. We have a new guest in the Town Council Chamber there today. Our new intern Annie joined us for the first time today and has stuck around for the meeting tonight, so.
Great. I hope there's a face-to-face introduction somewhere.
She will be introducing herself in a moment, I'm sure.
Great.
Once we get going.
Eddie, you were talking about laser lights. I've seen projection shows at the University of Virginia for their bicentennial and other events, but I don't know if that's exactly the same as a laser light show.
Yeah. Yeah, they're really impressive, and like Thomas says, non-power technical, so. Stone Mountain, that's what I was thinking of.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
You should drive by every day and can you remember the names?
Good evening, Zach.
Hello, how's everyone?
Lindsey, hi Stuart.
Hello, everybody.
Well, sir, you are on time and on forum. Looking for Mr. Gritsko still. I've not heard from him today.
Anybody heard from Dan?
He has been pretty busy on tours and all this season.
I'm gonna wait just about 30 seconds. I hear somebody coming.
Hello, sir. How you doing?
Getting ready to get started here. So I'll meet in the door. Ask the clerk, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Brad?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Counselor Gritsko is joining us maybe later. Counselor Malusi?
Here.
Counselor Munson?
Here.
And Counselor Payne?
You.
All right, you do have a quorum, mayor?
Good. I'm gonna ask everybody to either mute or silently say in the press conference, if you stand, do that.
And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a breathing justice for all.
Thank you. I have number two on the agenda, is the consent calendar, which includes approval of the agenda's financial report for April of this year, past meeting minutes for the April work session, and the April 19th meeting, and the April 29th special meeting. Do I hear a motion that we accept the consent calendar as presented?
I'm, we accept the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have several people with us tonight, which is how they are usual. Because we've been sitting here alone for so long, but Charlotte has something that's not related to matters of public hearing or anything else on the Capitol.
I'm having a real difficult time understanding what you're saying, mayor. Sorry.
I have a different mask on, but.
Okay.
I think, you know, with the new CDC guidelines and everything else that's going on, it's kind of like, right now, it's whatever you feel comfortable doing. And I don't feel comfortable ditching it completely, but anyhow, Charlotte, would you come forward?
Thank you, ma'am. And this is our microphone, so speak up loud toward this year.
Introduce yourself and tell us which one you are.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Spaden, Your Honor. I am a member of the senior senior center here in Scottsville. I am here because Java has decided to pull the senior center out of Scottsville. There are all of us that don't want that. We want to stay here. They want to put it in Esma along with Nelson, Esma, and Scottsville. We're talking of 100 pink. That's too many. And the reason I'm coming before you all is to see if there's any way you can help us keep the senior center for the Scottsville people here. I am the president of the skipper's club. Excuse them, I've got weak teeth. And we want to keep it here within the town limits. Maybe we'll get out of town, but Java doesn't want to do that. From my understanding, it has been always here in the town. And I'm asking for help to keep it here. If they, if we can't keep it here, a lot of people are going to withdraw, and that's going to be there because a lot of the people down at the apartment building, that's their only outlet to get out of that portal and to be what others see. So I'm asking the Town Council to see what they can do to help us find a sponsor or sponsor us so we can stay within the town of Scottsville, because they're going to take it to Alamo County, and they already call on us Southern Alamo County. We're no longer, we're no longer Scottsville citizens. And this was brought to us two weeks ago. We're having a skipper's meeting tomorrow, this Thursday. We're having a picnic to discuss about, we have a little bit over $10,000 in our camp that Java has no access to, and we're going to decide what we're going to do with that money. But we would like to have a senior center here so that we can keep, you know, going on trips, doing stuff with the seniors here in this camp, in this community, not in the Esma community, not in Nelson County, in Alamo. And I have talked to, I said, half of the seniors, and they want to stay here. They want to do stuff like it has been done. One of our seniors said they've been at that senior in that cafeteria for over 40 years. So I can't dispute. I know that they blame it on, Java says that Parks and Rec kicked us out. Parks and Rec killed me something now. They say Java didn't want us back in there because of the bad situation. So I don't know, you know, who pulled the strings to get the seniors in there out of there, but somebody's got to help me keep it here in Scottsville. Or we're not going to have a seniors center. And that to us is saying they don't have a care of regular seniors. As far as I'm concerned, this part of Alamo County is a great step toward any one. So okay, let this keep happening. We've got to take care of our seniors. And I think I'm one of the youngest ones in there. So any, hope you all can give us, I would appreciate. I'm willing to be my friend number. I am in the process of moving. I haven't found a place yet, but I want to stay here in this Scottsville area because I like it. I was raised, I've been in Scottsville, we've been 62 years. So I don't plan on going too far, and I would like to have a center that I can stay in Scottsville.
Well, thank you, Charlotte, and if it's okay with the, with the council members, I'll start making some phone calls tomorrow, and then I will report to them, and I will report to you, because I know some of those Java people anyhow are personal bases, and I would be happy to start, start tomorrow trying to figure out what's going on, because this is the first I've heard of that. Is that okay with council members?
I think that'd be great. I would hate to see us lose that.
I'll take the phone list.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, can I just say, let's take an aggressive stance on this, as aggressive as you can, because even though I wasn't part of the senior center, I had relatives there and friends from, you know, from way back. It's a good facility there. They had a cafeteria, they had seating. It was safe. It was well, you know, maintained. People enjoyed going there. I can't say enough good things about it, and the people that have worked with it for all these years. And that would be just a great loss for Scottsville and, and for these folks as senior citizens to have to pick up and move somewhere else. Some of them couldn't do it, some of them wouldn't do it, and we got to be aggressive on this.
Yep.
Yeah, like I say, our band is played over there for functions for the seniors. We've, we've attended their picnics. We've helped out with things over there, and it's just a great bunch of people over there, and I'd hate to see that not be around. So I will get on a call a second in the morning.
Anything I can do, anything I can do to help, please.
As soon as I talk to somebody, I'll shoot an email out to everybody to let you know what's going on.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of questions when you reach out is to ask about transportation options so that way if there are residents that miss one day, if we're able to keep it locally and want to go to another location, what those options are. So we're working together. And another tidbit, over 15 years ago, there was an intergenerational advisory group that was working intentionally to overlap the youth with the seniors in town, which is why the senior center in Java and the Boys and Girls Club are in the same locations. So that might be helpful to reference and to know.
And I do know, on just a personal basis, that a lot of the people that attend or used to attend, I'm talking two years ago now, because I've been removed from it for a while, but they would not also attend the Scottsville meetings. They would go to Esma and vice versa.
Right, they do both.
Back and forth.
Exactly, yeah. Which was double the, double the connection, right?
And double the fun, yeah.
But there are some people at the Scottsville school who cannot go because of.
Transportation, that's right. Right.
There is 52 people now that want to the Scottsville seniors there.
Okay.
And when you're doing a craft or having a luncheon, that's a lot of people to deal with. When you're talking 100 people, that's a lot of people to deal with.
Okay.
And we, as seniors, like Thanksgiving and Christmas, Java does not want us to have dinners yet. So we do that with the skipper's club. We do that at home. We don't ask them for anything. So, you know, I think we do a lot at home, and we hate to have our seniors in there this now because Java wants all those people together. We don't want that. We want to stay together as a seniors center and have everybody that. I've only been here five years, and I've grown really close to some of those people, and I hate to lose contact with them because of this.
Thank you.
Well, I will call.
Thank you for all of your concern.
I will, I will call, call Charlotte tomorrow. Just if there's nothing else to them to say, I'll talk to the people at Java and see what they have to say. I'll contact you tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Charlotte. Appreciate you bringing that before us.
Thanks, Charlotte.
Item four on the agenda is the mayor's report, and I don't really have a whole lot to add that didn't pass on to you last week at the work session. I was approached this morning after I had met with Matt and Thomas for a few minutes. Jade from the 18 Kitchen Restaurant across the street stopped me in the parking lot. First of all, his business partners, they had a fall Saturday and is in ICU in UVA with a skull fracture. So he fell off a ladder while working on one of these homes over on Warren Street. So we need to keep him in our thoughts. The other item was Jade was concerned because the, evidently the new owners of the shopping center have, are planning on a rent increase, and he doesn't know how he can keep his business open up there. So I contacted the representative of the owner of the Old Dollar General store right next to us, and they are going to get in touch with Jade, and I know they want to sell the building, but they may be able to work out some sort of lease deal, and so we may be moving the outlet down here if things would go right, and that way, speaking up to our seniors, they would have a walking access to a, you know, something like the Dollar General and not have to take their life in their hands getting to the Dollar General.
Incredible, yeah.
So those are the, oh, I did visit the New Forest in Kathy Mars' old building Saturday, and he's trying to get his act together. He stopped by this morning by the office here, lost some business cards, and I checked in on folks across the street, make sure, they said they've had so much business. And, uh, I checked in on folks across the street, uh, make sure they said they've had so much business. Uh, they have been having a, a problem keeping inventory as, uh, the outdoor outfitter down the street, he's having the same sort of problems. So that, that is a real good sign.
You think we're a two forest town?
I don't know if we're a two forest town or not. We'll see. But Eddie could tell us, we used to be what? A free supermarket town and a four gas station town and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, a couple of car dealerships.
Yeah. We'll, we'll see what happens. Um, obviously those, uh, that have been down this way, uh, Saturday Tiger had fuel and Saturday, Sunday morning early, they had fuel. Now they haven't had any fuel for the rest of Sunday and today. So I'm sure they'll get back, uh, back up to Snuff here before too long. It's just a matter of getting the trucks out on the road and with Tiger owning, owning the building, there may be a little impetus there for them to get the fuel to their, uh, their business, their own businesses if they are a distributor too.
Would you like to introduce Ms. Wheathouse?
Yeah, let, let's turn around, Matt. We have a, we have a new summer employee here with us today.
Yes, um, the, the town has had, um, great results on university partnerships, um, with several internships going back in the past. And so I'm, um, I'm very happy to introduce today, helping us for the summer, um, Ms. Annie Wheathouse, who comes to us from Virginia Commonwealth University, um, currently enrolled in their Masters of Planning. Would you like to say?
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Uh, speak up loud for this mic or, or take the, take the podium.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm being missed to meet all of you virtually. Um, so I'm in, I just finished my first year in the Masters of Urban and Regional Planning at VCU. So I reached out because I've seen that you guys have hosted planning in here in the past. Um, and they've been able to kind of mutually get experience from you while benefiting, being able to pick up some projects that you might not necessarily have all the staff for at the time. Um, so today we talked a little bit about, uh, going over some of the zoning ordinance language. And just making sure that's up to date as you guys go through that process. And yeah, I'm really excited. It's my first day, so I'm learning a lot. And nice to meet all of you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Ms., Ms. Brown on the screen there is our, uh, council liaison of the planning commission. So you'll want to work closely with her, I'm sure. Um, before we get into the real meeting, tonight's meeting, uh, enforcement committees, I might as well start at the, uh, on our big screen, the upper left-hand corner. Laura, you want to put the stuff on what's going on with your committee?
Um, I'd be happy to. So I'm reporting on multiple committees. Um, so bear with me as I go through my list. Um, first up is Government Services Committee. We're assisting, um, town staff with the DMV Select Manager Interviews this week. And also reviewed invitation for contractor bids to start doing the renovations and preparation for an August opening. Just wanted to remind you that the committee recommended recently that in the fiscal '22 budget, that we include funds to update the town code. For the public, municipal codes are a body of law that are enacted and enforced by towns. They're critical to our staff, our council, our committees, our police and our attorney regarding all town operations and guidance. From the farmer's market, despite the shifting CDC and farmer's market guidelines, um, we've continued to have a really strong season with our vendors and customer participation. I do have some news. However, our current manager, Debbie Smith, will be stepping down the end of this month to pursue some other family obligations. So please pass along your thanks to her when you see her for the incredible job that she's been doing. And if you know of anyone who might be interested in taking on the market manager position, have them reach out to Matt or Thomas. We will also be posting that, um, opening soon on social media and on our website. And again, a special thank you to Bread of Life Food Pantry and the Blue Ridge Dairy Food Bank for their combined grant support that helps support the paving of the parking lot around the market pavilion. Um, Events and Tourism Committee here, just please help me spread the word to look in these two locations for upcoming events because they are constantly shifting as things open up for the community, which I'm excited about. And that is the town of Scottsville Events Calendar, which I'll post in the chat after my report and the Scottsville Events and Festivals Facebook page. So we have some events already posted. We will be adding to that as additional details are confirmed. This month on, um, Sunday, May, was it May 30th? Is, uh, the VFW Receceremony at the Scottsville Farmer's Market at 3:00 PM. So if you're available, I'm sure that Mayor Smith and the VFW would appreciate your support and attendance as well as our veterans. Next month, James River Bateau Festival is the Wednesday after Father's Day. There'll be music, food, um, crafters, and of course the historic Bateau and their crews. We have the Scottsville Pollinator Festival that, um, the following Saturday at the farmer's market. An Independence Day Parade, um, sounds like all go forward, um, which is pretty exciting. And we have music starting at 7:00 PM, possibly earlier. Let's check back with our events calendar. And fireworks are, we're leaning towards a strong, um, expectation. So, um, we'll keep you updated on that. But right now they're not, they're not posted until finally confirmed. And then some other news I wanted to share with you is invited to the VFC Community Center Advisory Panel, which includes updates from the Blue Ridge Health Department, Friends of Esmont, Java, Yancey Food Pantry here, PBCC, the County Police, JMR, Library and Broadband Authority. Um, and they all just give a quick update. Um, the Yancey Community Center also hosted a community garden project earlier this month, and they have a new exhibit. If you haven't been there recently, featuring the Heritage and History Project. Um, one of the takeaways during that update that I thought might be of, uh, interest to town council is Friends of Esmont is working with Alamo County and CSX on creating a trail map. And therefore I recommend that the staff and council and our committees partner with the Friends of Esmont as they work with Alamo County Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission to add a joint Southern Alamo Trail Network to the Alamo County Comprehensive Plan. That is their goal. It's also our goal. We might get both of our goals accomplished if we work together. Any questions?
Hey, thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
You stay busy with all your committees and we appreciate it. Zach, you want to bring us up to date on the ARB?
Sure. Yeah. Uh, Architectural Review Board. Um, we met with a couple applicants last week. Um, one, um, property owner on Poplar Spring Road who built a fence last summer without, um, notifying the towns. We needed to get a COA on file with them. That was a good educational meeting. They were not aware they, they were in the Historic Overlay District. So it was good to meet a neighbor and explain a bit of how the town works. And they were very amenable to working with us going forward. Uh, we also met and spoke with Matt Lucas, who, um, currently owns the Bus Depot about some of the sort of interim mitigation measures that need to take place to just make sure the building is still sealed while he gets himself ready to begin more long-term work on that project. Uh, we're still waiting on meeting with most of the, uh, property owners who have properties currently rated poor, um, due to structural issues, um, or being unsealed. And I encourage town council in our work session just to review the ARB ordinance related to deterioration. Um, because that's what we're using to evaluate these properties, meaning, um, to be in poor condition, they have to have sort of an immediate threat to the structure. But our ordinance are more clear about deterioration over time and how that poses a risk to the building over the long term. And so that's, so I just encourage you all to take a look at that. So you're all, um, aware of how we're adjudicating those properties. Um, we will also have the town as an applicant for a sign soon for the DMV Select. We have the very fancy DMV sign, uh, ready to go. And we are considering, uh, the town is considering options, I should say, um, for either updating the sign we have, um, and, and thinking about placement. So I know, um, Matt and, and Thomas are thinking about that as well. I'm not sure if it would be, if town council should weigh in on that decision, but I was thinking about that yesterday. If that's something that maybe council should also contribute to as part of a work session item. I don't know, uh, before, um, the sign officially is approved or looked at by the ARB and then put up on the building. We certainly, I think, have time to do that because I don't think the sign has to go up until the end of the summer. So I just wanted to float that idea out with all of you to get some feedback this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Zach. Appreciate that. And, um, now Planning Commission, Ms. Brown?
Um, if I could, I would love Matt to do the update for this one since I was not in attendance, uh, for the last planning commission meeting.
Uh, certainly. Thank you. The, uh, one of the newer members, Shannon Strossner, um, chaired that meeting and did a great job with it. Um, we appreciate her efforts. They, um, moved forward the special use permit, uh, application for 137 East Main Street. Um, so that is up on agenda for town council tonight. Planning Commission recommended approval of that permit for, uh, three apartments, uh, in that historic downtown building. There were some concerns related to the best way to handle, um, the parking at that building. Um, but Planning Commission had a couple of ideas on how to resolve that. Um, that's something council can continue to look at. Um, Planning Commission also, uh, took a look at the zoning map amendments, uh, which are also on town council's agenda for tonight. And they called their public hearing for June the 7th, uh, as, as requested by town council and in anticipation of, um, council's work on the matter as well. Finally, Planning Commission, um, heard, uh, notice of an upcoming vacancy. Um, the current, uh, chair, Mr. Josh Peck, a former town council member with many good years of service to us, um, despite his young age, uh, is moving on in life, um, with a new job and, uh, and family changes and, and moving outside of town. So his last meeting with us will be in June. And, um, Planning Commission and Town Council will need to, um, get the word out on applicants there. Um, so if that's something that anyone in the community has interest in, um, Planning Commission is looking for, um, community leadership. Uh, the position is open to town residents and they can be, um, owners or renters of property. Planning Commission is unusual in its bylaws in, um, specifically calling out either the, of the owner or renter representation. It's important to have that diversity of views. Um, so, um, by all means, if you're interested, um, feel free to, uh, apply with a, um, a personal statement and a, um, and a resume if you have one. And, uh, Planning Commission and Council will get to work on that appointment. Um, that's all I know from Planning Commission secretary.
Any questions for our Planning Commission? Those are our charter committees, but I'd like to give the opportunity for Mr. Payne to report anything from Public Safety or Mr. Munson from Economic Development. Mr. Payne?
I was not in attendance at the, um, the, uh, meeting this month. We're holding them bi-monthly. Chief Volwinkle gave us a pretty good rundown, uh, at the work session. Um, and I don't believe it was anything, um, really, um, that, uh, needed to be reported to council. Um.
Okay. Um, I've met with the chief today for a few minutes and he and I are going to interview a candidate for, uh, part-time police position, uh, probably Wednesday afternoon around 4:00ish or something like that. So that's on the agenda. Uh, our agenda.
Okay. Yeah. I didn't have any feedback from the chief at all, um, after our, our work session. So.
He, he indicated that with, uh, one of their part-time officers having, uh, some physical problems from an accident and the other in training that our, uh, summons count would be a little less this month than, uh, what is the norm. So, uh, that's to be understandable. Thank you for that report. Mr. Munson, anything to report?
Yeah, just, um, uh, real quickly, Matt brought to my attention that, uh, the way that we were able to initially engage with Tiger Fuel was that, uh, it was through a conversation with, um, Mr. Duffy a while ago. And, uh, which suggested that, um, what we might do is to, uh, is think about what we would like to have here in town, what kinds of businesses we might like to have here in town. And then we'll reach out to, uh, some companies that may be looking to expand. So for example, um, I would love to see a Mexican restaurant here in, uh, in Scottsville. And, um, gives me some ideas about who I might be able to reach out to, you know, Azteco comes to mind off the top of my head, but places like that. So if there's anyone here who's got an idea of a business that they would like to see, um, explore Scottsville. We, I would, would love to know about that and be happy to, uh, to reach out to them. So just wanted to put a, uh, word out about that and get people thinking about what they'd like to see.
Okay. Thank you. I have a thought on one and I will email you that thought later.
Good.
Okay.
Great.
Are any questions for anybody that has given a report? Good. Thank you. So now comes the, uh, our public hearing on, uh, let's make it simple, public hearing on the budget. And so I will open the public hearing. We have members of the public and, uh, um, uh, asking if the, the ones in the Zoom meeting are here for the public hearing or just, uh, observing the, uh, council's actions this evening.
I, I see Mr. Fortick as a guest. Um, I think you can unmute. Um, welcome.
Hello. I'm just observing.
All right. Thank you. Good to see you, sir.
Thank you. And, uh, this Warble is with the paper, isn't she?
She works there, but she, well, welcome. Are you, are you interested in comment?
All right. Okay. We have Mr. and Ms. Heisen with us this evening here in the, uh, council chambers. And, uh, I imagine they are here for this public hearing primarily. So if one of you or both of you would like to step to the podium and, you know, the routine, identify yourself and, uh, Steve.
Welcome, sir.
Uh, I'm going to take this off. I'm Bill Heisen. I live in Scottsville and, uh, I got the, the budget and I was very impressed with how, how detailed it is and how much there is in this town and, uh, and how complicated it is. Uh, and I was able to, uh, to, uh, Zoom, uh, the meeting, one of the meetings, uh, about, about the budget. And, uh, I want to commend the, the council for balancing the budget and, uh, and, and all the initiatives they, they, they have. I really, uh, liked the fact that, uh, almost everybody was willing to cut their, 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 their personal, uh, committees or projects to balance the budget. Because I was concerned when I saw that, uh, uh, property tax. And I'm glad that that was not on there and was taken away. And, uh, I'm like, I'm like with Dan, I don't support that. I think the town would, could, could, uh, cut all this, a lot of the expenditures rather than to get a, a new tax, which once you get a new tax, it never works. So I think there's a lot that can be cut if they need to. But looking at the budget and, and this recovery act, it looks like the, the town is flushing money, but I guess it's not. I don't understand all of the, the, uh, the budget, but, uh, uh, I do feel like we're in a good spot right now. And I, and I also feel like if we weathered this storm with, uh, with the virus and got through this, then, then I think we should be in good stead. That I feel like things are really starting to pick up and turn around. So anyway, I'm, but I, I, I oppose any kind of, uh, of property tax unless it's really studied and really necessary. I, um, I think there's a lot of people who can cut it, just like you did with the town council. I, I, I like the idea of having a special trash pickup and that could be cut if needed to. Uh, I remember that years ago to have that. And I've asked several times about that and it's coming back. But if that doesn't work, that could be cut. But that's a nice, nice advantage to have because there are people who have dressers and all these things that they can't get rid of. And, uh, you know, I think I'm glad that's in there. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I, I do like the fact that, uh, maintenance is a priority. I think it's in there several times. And, uh, I know that we have a lot of parks and a lot of town to keep up with. And, and maintenance is really key. And, um, one of the things I, I know, I know is, uh, you know, that's the first thing people see when they come to town. They see this, they see the parks, they see the streets. But also, uh, and this is it, they, they go to the bathrooms sometimes and the bathrooms need work. Uh, they need cleaning, uh, weekly. And people have come to me and said, you know, something about the bathroom. So I think, you know, how we present our town is really important. With that being said, I, I, I do have a couple possible projects and I, I mentioned one today in an, in an email. But I do feel like, uh, communication with the public is, is really important. And I do feel like that, uh, that's, that's hard to do. And I, you know, I, I take a lot of initiatives myself and I know a lot of people can't do that to try to find out what's going on. And I even heard, you know, people in the town council say, you know, uh, let the people know about this, uh, inform the people, uh, get the word out. And I know that's hard because it's, there's no. And I know that's hard because it's, there's no single way to do that. So that's why I suggested they get a newsletter. I know I get the day to progress. A lot of people don't and they can't find out about things like that. A lot of people don't use social media and the website doesn't always have information about what's going on in town. And I'm lucky, Matt sends me some things now and then about meetings. And that's really easy. Once you get those, those notes and you can Zoom the meeting. But there's people have come to me and say, how do you Zoom the meeting? And I don't always know how to tell them to do that. And I sent them that link. But I do feel like if we had a newsletter that was targeted to the people in this town, and they would, they would be informed. There would be no excuses. But I think, you know, I'm actually kind of surprised that there's, we've got more people here because I've been in meetings where there's lots of people here when they're talking about the budget. And I think part of this, they're just not informed. And, you know, that kind of came to light when we did the smaller plan. And now that the lot's not going from house to house anymore, we're not, we're not being informed like we were. So I also think it'd be nice to just consider this to have a mailing. You know, all those people department, that's 50 people, 40 people department. They don't get out of the internet. They're not going to know what's going on. And there's a lot of senior citizens that do not, you know, cannot navigate the website or cannot find out about what's going on in town. So I do think if we could partner with maybe Scottsville Happings or with Almar or find out how to do that just periodically, that just to let people know, you know, who have email that this is going on. And that, and I know some people like Norman, having some volunteers. That would be a great way to get volunteers is just put that out in the town and saying like, we need volunteers here and there and like that. So I think that could be, and you could broadcast the announcements about, you know, town cleanup, the events that are coming on. So I just think somehow communicating with the public is real important. And finally, I'll wrap it up. The town website, I think, has improved a lot, but I do feel like that's like a time, it's like a digital street scape. The first thing people come to the town, if they can't come to the town, they go to the website. And the website needs some editing and needs some updating. It has some things on there that are crossed out. It still has the space on there. It has a couple of other things that are outdated. The senior center might be, maybe it's come back, but that's still on there. But there's a lot of things that are, some of the stores that are no longer here that are on there. So I like to see that update. But most importantly for me though is, you know, we haven't had, we haven't had the minutes with any of the meetings since last year. I think the last one I saw was in November. And I like to keep up with things that's going on in the town. And if you go to the minutes, you can get it pretty quickly. And you go to the minute page and you can never find the minutes. So I really feel that that would help a lot. And the other thing is on the town website, they have a how-to page, link. And it says how to pay your bill and how to do this. I think they ought to have a how-to Zoom meeting on that thing.
Good point.
So you could, the first thing, if you don't go to the website and you go to how-to, it will, you know, will lead you how to do that. Because I think they're, I'm hoping, maybe I'm idealistic, but I'm hoping there's, there's a lot of people who really like to get more involved and really know about what's going on in town, be more knowledgeable. But I think especially during this time that they're limited. And as much as we could help them and inform them, I think that's the most important thing we could do is try to inform the public of what's going on. And I know this is calendar, this time of year, but I would like to, you know, see that. Most importantly is to get the people informed about things. So anyway.
Thank you, Bill. It's always good to have you with us with your many years as a resident and your vast experience on the town government. Anything, anything you say we know is worth listening to. Brenda, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I think you covered it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any others, either on the Zoom meeting or the, anyone else in the Council other than the Heisens that wishes to speak during the public hearing? Not hearing any responses to that question, I will close the public hearing and sort of turn things over to Matt here for a little bit so we can guide us through the next couple of steps in this proceeding.
Thank you, Mayor. The budget has three related voting items before you and Council this evening. Completing the town's finances for this year and launching them for next year involves a couple of steps. Approving the spending for the ending of the year that we're in now, which goes out through June 30th. And then approving the appropriations on the budget for the fiscal year, starting July 1st and going through June 30th of 2022. And then after that is the related tax rates that provide the revenue that informs all of the spending in the budget. And we have, as Mr. Heisen said, zero advertised real estate tax, but there is an advertised change to the cigarette tax rate, which if Town Council wants to change, requires another action. We've had several work sessions worth of discussion on these matters. Would you like to review that presentation information again or go directly into the discussion of these motions?
What does Council feel like they want to do? What does Council feel like they want to do? Want to take one at a time, go ahead and clear the slate right now? Or do you want to discuss any of the three items?
I have one question. For item one in terms of action, shouldn't it be approving spending and appropriation for fiscal '21? Are we not doing a new appropriation to balance the budget?
The appropriations resolution increases the budgeted amounts. It's the same form as the CARES Act appropriations that we've dealt with previously. So it's just, it's just the one to make additional appropriations and amend the budget.
Okay, so it's just the terminology. And then Mayor Smith, in regards to your question, if I could just request that previous budget presentations be added to the notes for public access, I think that will help with transparency and questions that might arise.
Okay.
Sure.
Certainly.
So do we need to vote on each one of these things separately?
Yes.
Okay. So is there any other discussion on any of the three items we're getting ready to vote on? And hearing no responses to that question, we will start with the annual resolution appropriations of the town of Scottsville for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. And that is the first thing right on our.
You can take them in either order. Do you want to do this year or this year? Would you like to do this year or next year first?
Let's do this year first.
Okay.
Let's get this year out of the way first. Okay, so that would be a resolution of appropriations of the town to amend the budget fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That is what we're going to vote on. Do I hear a motion that we approve that resolution?
Stuart, you are on mute there if you're.
So I am. I move that we approve the motion to balance the budget for the remainder of the year.
I get approve the resolution of appropriation for fiscal year.
Resolution appropriation, excuse me.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
And any further discussion on that item? If not, Mr. Johnson, would you call or vote?
Council Brown? Sorry, you are on mute. Thank you. Council Bullock?
Yes.
Council Malusi?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
And Council Payne?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. The motion carries.
Very good. Thank you all. Second item is the resolution that would, for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, budget. Any discussion before we ask the motion?
I'd just like to make the comment that again, the resolution that passed as presented allows for maximum spending. Doesn't mean that we have to spend everything that we approve moving forward in the 2021, 22 fiscal year.
That's exactly right and a good point that this, these spending totals outline the project ideas, including some of the CARES Act, I'm sorry, PARPA Act related spending that we've discussed previously. We're still looking for contract guidance on some of these items. For example, Town Council has already approved the launch of the DMV Select with a vote a couple of months ago. So that's on the way. But many of the other project items that we've discussed still have detail work and contract drafting to do. So just because the money is shown within the total budget doesn't mean that Council gives up control over project management. And for many of these, you still have contracted project details still to be worked out that we can review in future meetings.
And I think it's also worth mentioning too, that the Recovery Act funds we have through 2024 to spend. And so if we don't spend them this year, we can roll them over into another year.
That's right, sir. There's a, there's a sense of urgency on some of these matters because we know there are problems in the community now that need help. But there is quite a, quite a long time, fully five fiscal years, that the federal funding will touch. You're exactly right. We can, we can wait to plan some of these things out correctly.
And I would just add to that, that the budget document that we had fairly well settled before we knew the art money was coming in, gave us a very clear picture of how much we raised each of those spending lines. And so we'll be able to track what we do spend in each of those and show you at the end of this coming year what the carryover of funds would be.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have a comment? If not, I'd ask for a motion to accept the annual resolution of appropriations for the year ending June 30th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution of appropriation for 2021, 22.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Now is any further discussion on this? Hearing none, I would ask the clerk to call the vote.
Sir, Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Bullock?
Yes.
Councilor Malusi?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Payne?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. The motion carries.
Thank you all. And third and final item in this section is the ordinance, which basically says we'd like to raise the cigarette tax for a pack from 35 cents to 47 cents. I know we discussed this. I know there are smokers. We know that smoking may or may not be healthy. We don't want to encourage it, but we don't want to discourage it to the point that we lose our revenue from it. Before we ask a motion on this one, is there any discussion leading up to the motion? And if not, may I hear a motion to either accept or pass or decline this tax increase on cigarettes?
I move that we accept the motion to increase the cigarette tax.
And is there a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask the clerk to call for a vote.
Yes, sir. Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Bullock?
Yes.
Council Malusi?
No.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Payne?
No.
Thank you all very much. The motion carries.
Thank you. And thank everybody for all the hard work. And I know we had the extra meeting, a lot to digest with all this. It usually is this time of year and I think everybody did a really dedicated job to coming up with the best budget that we could under the circumstances. And it's been a crazy year and we all know that. So let's hope we can get some things done and save some money for the future and just continue to make Scottsville the place that is, a great old town. And thank again to the Heisens for coming this evening and expressing their thoughts on the budget matter and other items. I am being of this section as a special use permit for the apartments in the Sonic Ward. And this copy says, call for June 17th public hearing, isn't that June 17?
The, I'm sorry.
Thursday.
That's right. The correct date for the regular council meeting would be June 21st. Planning Commission has acted on this. On the 3rd, the 21st would be the day of your normal meeting. Thank you.
So I think everybody has enough information on that, this particular topic, especially used permit. If you have any questions, all we're doing tonight is calling for a public hearing on our, on June, June 7th.
21st, sorry.
21st.
Yep, between us.
Yeah, the 21st. So do I hear a motion now, folks, to call for a public hearing on the special use permit, 137 East Main Street, on our regular meeting in June, which would be June 21st.
Yes, I will make the motion for a special, for a public hearing on the special use permit at 137 East Main Street on June 21st.
Thank you.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
And is there any discussion on that particular motion? If not, Mr. Johnson's worth it.
I believe you can just take a voice vote on this one.
Okay, let's do, let's do a raise your hand, folks, if there's one that's on the screen tonight. All those in favor of calling a public hearing on June 21st with this matter, raise your hand. And those opposed, raise your other hand. I think the motion passes. Item C, zoning text amendment, so let me ask the lawless how deep we need to get into this part.
To your, to your pleasure, sir. There's been a couple of work sessions and planning commission meetings on the topic. I'm happy to go over the details again. Ms. Wheathouse will be helping me with the staff work on this in the next month. So it, I can go into plenty of detail as a, as a planning lecturer if you'd like.
So how does Council feel about going ahead and calling for a public hearing again on the 21st of June for this matter? That gives us a month and a work session between now and then to get any questions answered, either at work session or directly contacting the town or the county.
Sounds good to me. And then at that June meeting, we would be make, we would be approving the changes, correct? Yeah, okay.
So I need a motion to call a public hearing on June 21st for the matters of amendments and zoning now, text amendments for zoning and zoning map amendments.
I will make the motion for a public hearing on June 21st for the zoning text amendments and the zoning map amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just, I'd like to credit the work that Danny's going to do in the next month. What you've, welcome aboard. Town Council and Planning Commission have worked on these for several months. And so you've got drafts that carry Planning Commission's recommendation. But I, I'm not certain that they're perfect. And I think with the further public outreach on the public hearing and the additional new staff that we have to look at it, it's very possible that edits would come forward that would make this better. Town Council is not required to approve these in exactly the form that they're advertised. You have an opportunity in the next month to make improvements and try to make this better. So I, I'm very open to the possibility of improving these further and would, would hope for friendly amendments to what's advertised. That would help us. These are zoning ordinance text and maps that haven't changed in decades in some places. And we want to take our time and get it right. So I, I wouldn't submit that they're in perfect form now and can't change.
There. So now.
It is moved and seconded but not voted.
Moved and seconded but not voted upon yet. Moved and seconded, but not voted upon yet. Who was in favor of calling a public hearing on zoning text amendments and zoning map from June 21st? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Then that motion passes.
Thank you.
I was handed a note that the police interview will be 4:00 PM on Thursday, so not Wednesday. It was officially Wednesday, it's been changed to Thursday, we're interviewing a potential part-time police officer for the town.
That's it.
Staff, of course, Mr. Unsworth, would you like to pull us in on anything we need to know?
The biggest thing I wanted to bring up tonight was, as we maybe look in the near future at wrapping up this format of meeting and moving back into Victory Hall there, I think that we should reflect a little bit on, on what we've gained from this format in transparency and availability, accessibility, both to each other and to the public, to Bill Heisen's point earlier. I feel like if we still had BB coming by the office, he would really like being able to pick up YouTube videos rather than a two-hour-long audio file. All that being said, our room there in Victory Hall is not terribly well-equipped for what we're doing. And I think the more people we add to that room, the, the worse our product will become and the less useful it will get to the, the outside public viewing it live or later. So Matt and I are going to try to give some thought to that and see if there's money that hasn't been spent yet in this year to maybe try to address it before we, before we move back into the building. If not, we'll hopefully be able to do it soon thereafter. But any kind of feedback, input, thoughts on things that have worked particularly well or that have not, that you'd like to see addressed as we move forward, that would be very helpful and welcome. And Laura will doubtless get Government Services Committee wrapped in on that as well. But yeah, that's a very, just kind of new thought that we were kicking around earlier today as we were getting ready for this meeting and realizing that it might be one of our last in this format. So yeah, that's about it that I've got, Matt.
Actually, Thomas, I, I was just going to jump in there. I appreciate your comments about that, about, sorry, as we transition back to more in-person meetings. So I know we had been doing like Facebook live streaming and I don't know, I, for me, like this might, this format might be better. Like a Zoom link shared out with the public might be a better way to tune in, for example, than the other ways that we've done it. I, I would certainly be supportive of trying to find, you know, just some better sound, you know, gear for that space, area mics or something, just so that we can get a better sound quality out. But I'm also curious, you know, and we may still be waiting for guidance from our own state government. But if, as we move back in person, but things are still shared out through Zoom or something, and they're, and we still might have issues of people feeling that they aren't safe coming into the building to share public comment. It feels like we might be navigating some kind of hybrid meeting structure. And so I'd like for us, maybe at a work session, just to talk to like what our options are for that, so that we can still provide accessibility, but also make sure that we're doing what we can so that we can, mostly around sound, make sure that we're able to communicate and share well together.
I, I think that's a very good point and a good topic for June work session. If I had to read the tea leaves and guess, I think the, the governor's state-level emergency will run through June 30th and then end not long after that in July. And if, if the town follows the state in ending this emergency the same way that we declared it, the continuity of government ordinance that lets us have the meeting in the format that we're having now will go away. We're still going to be free to take public comment online, and that would be good accessibility. But absent the emergency ordinance, we have to be in-person meeting together. So it will behoove us probably in June to think about what we want our transparency to look like come July, when maybe the council members have to be in person, but members of the public may still want to participate from home.
And I would just add to that, there's good possibility that future legislation could address and loosen some of these, you know, definitions of what in-person, what a quorum is. If we improve the system that we're working on, we would have, as Matt said, we still have a requirement for an in-person quorum. Only in-person members would be able to vote. But, you know, for work session, for something that you were okay with not voting on, the ability for town council members to, to join the meeting and join the discussion remotely would, would still be there.
Okay, yeah, it sounds like something that we will be dealing with and we need to start thinking about how we're going to deal with it, no matter what, what the final edict from the state dictates. Let me ask Matt if he has any further, further reports to make this evening.
Question for the good of the group. We, we have fast-moving changes in public health here now. And the sign down in front of the doors of this building for a few months now has said, closed to the public, call to make an appointment, masks required inside. Are there any strong feelings from council members, one way or the other, about changing the way that our services are out to the public?
Yeah, I feel like town office should be open.
But that said, I, I feel like maybe having a mask requirement indoors, provided that that's something that you guys are still comfortable with, might be the way to move forward.
We would qualify as a public space under the county mask ordinance definition. We chose earlier not to pass our own local ordinance and to defer to the respective counties that govern us. So yeah, as long as Almaral County's mask ordinance is in effect, we would qualify as a public gathering space under that and wouldn't have to worry about passing anything separately to dictate mask usage in the building.
I, I also think whatever we consider for town office should sort of set the stage for when the DMV Select opens. So if we're looking ahead and following the same guidelines, we should think about those in operation now.
Okay.
Anything else from anybody? I want to again thank, thank Matt and Thomas for doing the budget work and for council with their thoughtful and, and thoughtful comments, their hard work in bringing the budget to its fruition, as they say. And again, everybody did a lot of work and a lot of good work. And I really appreciate it makes, makes things run smoother when, when there's not a lot of disagreements and everybody's pretty much on the same page. But a lot of hard work that I need to do, and everybody should be commended for their hard work. If there's nothing else, I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Adjourn, thank you all so much.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night all, thank you.
Thank you.